Hello, Chloe. Hi, Chloe. So with that, let's call the meeting to order. Do a pledge of allegiance. I have a picture of a flag I used during all of our Zoom meetings during COVID, so we might as well. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. With that, can't see myself. I don't know why. Here we go. Just so I know that I'm on the camera. We are meeting in a, an ad hoc special meeting of the Board of Health, which was called at the request of Lee Acker and Seth Rubin, because I'm, I'm done. I've tried to be done now for a while, and you guys need to establish a new leadership team. And so at our next meeting, which is two weeks from tonight, I believe, and which I will not be able to attend, we will hold elections for the Chair and the Vice Chair for the Board for the coming year. And Kevin, it's great that you're here, because I'd love it if you would explain to folks the process for the election, which they should know by now, because we've done it, tried to do it twice, had not gotten anywhere. But I'd like Kevin to explain the process. And then I think I'd like to spend a minute or two talking about the role. And then it's, it's an open floor. We don't have any board business on which we're going to vote. So it's, it's an open floor for people to express their, their interests, feelings, and, and kind of try and get things in order so that two weeks from now, you can actually elect a new Chair and, and Vice Chair and, and get things rolling. So Kevin, I'm gonna turn it over to you.
Absolutely. Thank you. So the, the meeting's gonna open like every other meeting. You will call the meeting to order. And then Dr. Simmons, I will, I guess if you won't be there, then the Vice Chair would then be in charge of running the meeting.
Chloe, that's you, dear.
Yeah, and if, from that point, she'll, you know, open up the floor for nominations for, for Chair. And then you'll vote on the subsequent, you know, it'll go in order. So if multiple people are nominated, you'll take a vote on the first one until you get a majority. Then that person becomes the, the Chair. You do the same thing for the Vice Chair. That's your, your annual reorganization. And then I guess you also then have the Secretary kind of Minute Taker type of, of role that you could also vote on as well, if you want to separate that from the Vice Chair, if that's, you know, how the Board wants to organize that.
We never have, Kevin. And so at this point, I, I think that keeping the Vice Chair role as, as, as the Minutes Taker, I think is, unless people here have an appetite for adding another role to fill, we're having trouble filling the first two, I think we should probably stick with what we've got.
Yes.
So let me just clarify, because i- i- if there is only one nomination, that, that nominee requires the ascent of a majority of those present? Or a majority of the Board?
It's a majority of the, I believe it's a majority of the Board. I can get clarification from our attorney. Usually when there's voting, it's majority of the Board.
But if, if there are two candidates, the one who, who has the majority, you would then repoll to, to assure that that individual has the support of the entire Board. Is that how that would go?
It doesn't have to be the entire Board. It's a majority of Board members that are there.
We'll clarify whether it's, it's members present or, or total Board, right?
Yeah.
Okay. And then, so when you get an individual has the majority that we've defined, then we have a new Chairman, and that individual will hold through similar process, an election for the Vice Chair, which we've just agreed by ascend, I think it will maintain the role of Minute Taker and, and the person responsible for running meetings when the Chair is, is not available. Okay, so everybody, everybody clear on that? A little bit of organizational news. Julie Kohler, this evening, sent a, an email. She hasn't been able to make it again, hasn't been able to make it, I believe, this year, and believes that that will be an ongoing issue. So she's decided to withdraw from the Board. Kiki's witnessing the birth of her great-grandchild, so she can join us. And there's one other who's not present and blocking on her name. At any rate, we, we do have a, we do have a quorum here. Don't need one because we're not taking any, any Board action. So. I, Seth?
That's a question I have about the next meeting where we do the election. We, we will need a quorum then, I would imagine?
Yeah, I would, I would imagine you'll need a quorum, yeah.
You definitely need a quorum to hold a meeting. If there's not a quorum of the Board, then the meeting cannot occur.
So we can't even have a meeting? But, okay, so that answers the question.
What we've done in the past is, is, is have a meeting without, without action or minutes. But you won't be able to elect, and you won't be able to act on any, any motions before the, the Board. So I wanted to take a minute and talk about the role, because I, I think some people who might be interested in the role are hesitant because quote, they don't know how to do it unquote, or are unsure. And, and I would, I would just say that, that you don't need a lot of experience in running meetings to step into the role of running the meeting if you would feel comfortable doing that. And, and to do that, I mean, the, the main two jobs related to the meetings are to set the agenda and to run the meeting. And you've, I run it my way. You saw the way Alex ran it before. I think some of you were still around. No, I don't know if anybody was around when Linda Shawnee was still, Lisa, just Lisa and I. I, I actually had two meetings with, and I'm blocking on his name, pediatrician who, who was Chair before Linda. Everybody does it a little bit differently, and it's just a matter of keeping, of setting the agenda and keeping the agenda on track for the meeting at the meetings. The role of the Board of Health, however, is to provide a volunteer organization with expertise to serve the needs of the Board of Commissioners around issues of public health in, in, in Radnor. So the additional piece is to maintain the relationships with the, the people that, that you need now. Predominantly, we've had the benefit of having Maggie being our Board of Commissioners representative on the Board of Health. And that's been a great benefit, because it's actually a direct pipeline. In earlier iterations, the Board of Commissioners representative to the Board was often not as present as Maggie. And so having the relationship with the Board of Commissioners and with the, the full-time professional staff of the township that you, that you need to. There have been a lot of different ways of running the Board in, in the four tenures. I kind of came in at a very odd time just before the pandemic. And I felt that my role was to strengthen the critical relationships that would allow the Board to have an, an understanding of what was going on. So not only was pandemic coming on, but Radnor Township, being in Delaware County, was kind of, if you'll pardon, caught with our pants down, because all federal and state influence comes through the county, and we did not have a county department or Board of Health. So I, the things that I spent a lot of time on were establishing the relationship with the professional staff, establishing the relationship with the school district, and establishing the relationships with the, the nascent Department of Health and transitioning a lot of services which used to belong to the Township Board of Health to the County Department of Health. Alex took a, 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 a different approach. Those, those relationships were established. Alex provided a lot of extracurricular programming and public service kind of, of programming. Linda, before me, had mostly people giving talks during the, the Board meetings. And the external pieces are catch as catch can. So we've been in a quiet period where the Commissioners have not come to us very much. I had the good fortune during my tenure of having several crises come up. The Kratom business on Lancaster Avenue, Mole at, at Villanova University. There was one other blocking on it. And we did, we did do some other things. We, we rewrote the the pet ordinances. One of the things that the, that the, that the Chairman does, has done, does need to do is to assure the ongoing support for and success of one of our cornerstone programs, which is our intern program. So I've said way, way too much, but there is support for you. I'm happy to help whoever becomes Chairman with how, how to solve things that they don't necessarily, haven't figured out how to do. There is help in the form of people in Kevin's office and in the Township offices, Peggy, Lisa, Mary, Maryam. And the, the Chair and Vice Chair should, should work together to assure that the Board has agendas that support the, the needs of the Board, and therefore the needs of the Board of Commissioners. So then I'm gonna shut up and turn it over to Lee and Seth, who were the, the drivers behind this, and, and who I think I would like to, to turn the meeting over to.
Sorry, if I could just clarify the, the meeting for the quorum. So you guys have, you're appointed nine members. You have a vacancy, and with Julie's resignation, that gives you seven. But you still have to have a quorum of the nine. So for your next meeting, you will need five members present for the meeting.
Thanks, Kevin. Lee, you were about, no, I'm sorry. Seth, you were about to speak.
I was just gonna thank Lee for arranging the meeting. Credit where credit is due. Getting us all together. I really appreciated that. And I'll just say, I want to give Lee a chance if she wants to speak, but I just really thought, given the fact that, you know, we've gone now two cycles without being able to, to have someone take Dr. Simmons' place to just make sure that we have some, that we know what's going to happen and talk about it. And I do think it was very valuable to hear a review of what the Chair does, and, and just a review of what our goals are. You know, the the spectrum of activity that can happen from being very quiet, which I think is helpful, to point out that this is a relatively quiet time, but it can be, it can be a busy and exciting time with, with things like pandemic occur. But I just thought it was really important for us to meet and make a plan. Lee, I don't know, Lee or Lisa or Chloe, I don't know if you have any thoughts that you wanted to say.
I was just gonna thank you for proposing this meeting. I mean, I did some of the legwork in setting it up, but really Kevin and you were the driving force. So thank you for that. I mean, I don't know if we're dancing around this, or if this can't be brought up directly, but I mean, are there nominees? Or is there interest? Can we just lay it out? And then also for a quorum for two weeks from now, Dr. Simmons, if you're not here, one, two, three, four, five, I guess, I guess we should be fine to meet as long as
As long as everybody's able to come.
Exactly. Yeah, but if Babi is now on board, and the four of us have been at most meetings, there's five right there, and then hopefully others will join as well. We should be okay.
Yeah, Kiki generally tries, although she has, she's had a series of unfortunate circumstances. Is that what, what you might call it? She, she's been missing for a couple, but in each case, there, there have been circumstances unpredictable. Her intention was to join, and, and she did not did not make it. So, so I'm glad you bring that up. Since we have, Seth, did you, I'm sorry, you wanna go and say something?
I, I was just gonna say, just to reinforce what Lisa said, I definitely think we should explicitly talk about, do we have nominees? Who's gonna be there? I, I just, I just think it's only fair to the, to the Township and to Dr. Simons and to, you know, ourselves, to just make sure we have a plan and it's gonna work, because you know, we, we have to be successful. So I apologize. I didn't mean to interrupt you.
Well, I'll start out by, by stating, so I will definitely be at the meeting in two weeks. Over the summer, Alex had approached me about being Chair or being, you know, put forward for Chair. At that time, I was kind of like, I don't know. But at that time, I was thinking, or I was told that I would not be doing the student intern program, because we had two other individuals who were doing the student intern plan. Now I am doing two separate student intern projects. And not that I wouldn't be interested in chair in the future, but since that is my primary, you know, role right now, I feel like on the Board, I am not interested in another position at this time. Anyone else?
I guess I can say that at one point in time, Alex asked me to be Vice Chair, and I didn't real, I, I accepted, but I didn't realize the Vice Chair was gonna be a Minute Taker and responsible for writing up the minutes and the agenda. And I just didn't have the time in my day to actually work through all that. I would be happy to be a Vice Chair, but I wouldn't be able to do, be a Minute Taker and be responsible for writing up the minutes and providing that to the, to the group. So that's why I, I ended up turning it down.
Well, and my question for Chloe is that we, I mean, we just elected Chloe Vice Chair. We have to reelect her, correct? Because it's a new year. Is that correct?
You have to reelect the Vice Chair. You don't have to reelect Chloe.
Right, right, right. What I'm saying is Chloe
No offense meant towards you, but correct what, what Lisa said.
Right, right. So I, I guess a, a secondary question should be, is Chloe interested in continuing? I think she's doing an excellent job with the minutes. I would love for her to continue with Chair. I just want to, Vice Chair, I just want to make sure that she, because that may come into our, you know, thinking of thinking about this.
If, if you guys would nominate me again, I'd be happy to be Vice Chair.
Okay.
Or does Chloe have interest in being Chair? I mean, you know.
Kevin, are there age, are there age or degree requirements?
That I don't know. I can look in the Charter. I can, I can follow back up with that if I, once I confirm the vote on the actual positions, if it's a quorum of, or it's a majority of the members present, or I know for the Commissioners, it's a majority of the, the Board as a whole. So I just, I'll need to get clarification on that.
It feels appropriate from my perspective, I realize this is probably, this is nothing official, to have someone be Chair who's been with, who, who's been around for a little while, or has career experience. Chloe, I think we're so grateful for what you're doing. And I didn't want, I, I said what I said, because I didn't want to shut you out of that discussion. I don't think anybody else did either. But we're very, very grateful for what you've done and what, you know, you're interested in continuing to do.
Thank you. I think, I don't think I'd be up to do Chair, just because I think someone with more experience, like in the field, or just someone more well-versed in the medical field should be the Chair and not me.
That was very gracious, Chloe. And I would like to, actually, you have been splendid in the role, proactive in doing things and communicating. And I think those are the, those are some of the, the key. And I, I heartily encourage the Board and Chloe, if you're willing, that Chloe would be great to keep on as the Vice Chair. And I agree with you, Chloe. A little bit of seasoning is probably a good thing before taking on a leadership role.
Thank you.
Also, you know, college, it's a lot. So we wouldn't want you to bite off more than you could chew. I think the fact that you're doing the minutes is outstanding in addition to your other, you know.
Well, I think that Kevin would probably agree with me. He's probably heard, if you want to get something done, get a busy person to do it. Which is one of the reasons I need to quit. Because fishing is, is, is occupying, skiing are occupying my time these days. And I, I, there are the amount of, when you're, when you're a busy professional, working hard every day, and maybe working into your evenings, it feels hard to commit. But if, if you are a reasonably well-organized individual, it can be, it can be contained. It's not all, it's not every day, all the time. It is once a month, setting the agenda. Setting the agenda is, is not a big deal. It's pretty much a template. There are additions and subtractions. If you're not sure exactly what's happening, the, the, the old business and new business can subsume a lot of subsets. And getting a sense of what the Board of Commissioners might need in advance, or what the Board of Health might have of, of interest. Putting the agenda together is not that hard, but making sure people are aligned and, and having a sense, having a finger on the pulse of the Board are, and those are communication. It is not a huge commitment of time. It is a huge commitment of commitment. And I'll tell you, you don't have to model your chairmanship against any previous chairmanship. You can, I mean, Alex moved it in a very different direction from where it had gone for the previous couple of years, and was, was successful in that. And I think he would have continued to be successful had he not needed to leave for, for his career progress. So A, I don't think you need to worry about what other people did. You can put your own mark on it. B, it is a commitment, but it is not a huge time commitment. It is just a huge commitment. And in terms of what was already said, Babi, I wouldn't, if, I don't know what kind of experience you have in leading meetings, but if you, if you're a comfortable individual leading meetings, and you're comfortable in the field, in the field of public health, I think both those things are true as well. I'm, I'm, I'm not sure that you need to have been in this role a long time to consider yourself a, a, a candidate for this.
Thank you. I, I'm comfortable in running meetings. I think I would feel maybe more comfortable being on the Board for a little bit longer before taking a role. But I'm not, I'm not opposed to it in the future.
I, I, I think that it's important to have experience in a field. I think it's important to have, you know, to, to have crucial life things, like we, we talked about with Chloe. I think it was a good point. You know, it's, it's probably not reasonable to say to someone who's, you know, just embarking on college, and, you know, Chloe's taken on so much. We're so proud of you and so grateful. I'll, I'll speak for myself. I, I, I fall into the category, what, I put myself in the category of what Dr. Simmons was saying. I, I am busier than, let's just say, myself or my family would like me to be. And I really personally can't right now, I'm not saying any time in the future, but I can't accept more responsibilities. It's just not fair basically to all. It, it would, it may not even be fair to all of you. So I, I can't accept, I can't take on more. So that's just where I am at the moment.
So with respect to Dr. Simmons very graciously making it clear that you, you do need to step down, I don't want to even imply that I'm testing that boundary in any way, shape, or form. But if we now, as of tonight, have two vacancies, and I know two very qualified people who are interested, so I imagine, you know, whether it's those people or other people, it'll take time, maybe, but we'll get good people. Not necessarily for the leadership roles, but to diversify the responsibility, let's say, on Lisa's plate, who would otherwise be frankly, a prime candidate clearly for this, with the experience in the Board and, and otherwise. Is there any flexibility to say, all right, let's recruit these two members sooner than later? And then, as they step up, and I know, as I'm saying this, this sounds like a, a long-term landscape, but you know, then we take a little bit more off Lisa's plate. People are the same, you know, two people aren't doing all the work, and then she becomes Chair or whoever. You know, do you see what I'm saying? Like change the landscape altogether? Because if we set something in two weeks, and then this structure is changed again in terms of kind of who we have and what the distribution of labor looks like, what happens? Or if you don't have anybody to step up right now, and I shouldn't say step up, who, who frankly is able to do it right now?
So I want to make one clarification. I believe there is currently, I, I think we had a full Board until Julie resigned.
Yes. And, and yeah, when I was looking at the website, it did not include Babi on there. So we did have a full Board. But now we do have just one of those vacancies.
My, my tenure ends, I believe, with the last meeting of the year. I'm, I'm compelled. So my, my, my plan was to step down as Chairman, Chairperson, and stay on the Board through the end of my tenure. I think it's two, two terms. I think I also had a piece of, of a vacant term to start with. But two, two full terms, and that ends for me in, I think, no, November, December. I'll, I'll have to check. And then you'll have another. But, but Lee, I think you put your part of the game here is recruitment. It is keeping keeping people who have energy for and interest in it in the seats, and making sure that vacancies don't go unfilled, although it's a slightly, I wouldn't say terribly cumbersome. I think you just, you, you put the people forward, but, but it does require some time, because it has to go through the Board of Commissioners. A nomination has to go through the Board of Commissioners, be reviewed there before. And, and Kevin, what do you figure that between when somebody volunteers for an empty spot and when they can get in the seat, what's the timeframe?
So the Board meets twice a month for these months outside of the summer months. An application would come in with a letter of intent. We'd work with Peggy and Manager's Office to get that scheduled. So if somebody could submit a letter tomorrow, it would look to, you know, and I don't know what the Board's agendas look like meeting to meeting. But they would probably try to do it the very next meeting, an interview, and then possibly either appointment that meeting or the next meeting. So it could happen within a, a month's timeframe.
Right.
And, and the other thing, I just wanted to add that, you know, and Dr. Simmons, you've mentioned a lot about the agendas. Staff is here to help with those. I know over the years that you and I have coordinated, you were coordinating with Marie when she was here on, you know, the ideas. We put it into the format, we run it past the Chair, get approval, and then we, we handle all the administrative procedures in terms of getting the agendas out to to the, the Board and to the public and post it.
Right. You don't even have to format it. You just have to have the list of, of items, Maryam formats, it posts it, and Peggy keeps a careful eye on the personnel aspects of it, so there's, there's support from the, from the Township. So, so I, I need to focus this just a little bit. There are two then current members. The other Lisa, Lisa Curry and Kiki, who are not here, who would be potential candidates.
I think Lisa Curry may be here.
That, well, Lisa, Lisa's one of our admins, so she is
Lisa, I, I can't, I'm really right. And Kiki are not here. And the everybody else has excluded themselves, except the two people not here, Bob, Seth, Seth's excluded, excluded himself, Babi, and, and Lee. So we're, we're we're coming down to a numbers game here.
So I would be more than happy to consider in the future, but being both new and my youngest is probably gonna be starting preschool stu-, I mean, just this year, I think in particular, is the most limited, and that won't be true a year from now, but I think we're gonna have a lot of candidates a year from now, it sounds like. So.
Lisa, can Oh, sorry, sorry.
No, no, go ahead. No, no, that's it.
I thought you were finishing out. I apologize, please.
Really, I was finished, totally finished. Thank you.
Lisa, maybe you could talk about the responsibility of being, of, of mentoring the students. Because it seems like your hesitation for taking the Chair would be the, the role that you already have, the burden you already have with the students.
Yeah, I know.
And maybe some of us could, maybe we could find a way to disperse that sooner. Lee had a great idea, but you know, maybe we could disperse that today or, or help begin to think about that today.
Yeah, I mean, I would, it might be difficult to do it like halfway through, right? Because I've come up with plans with the students, and we've kind of met twice already, and we kind of have a plan in place, and I think that consistency is good for them. um, I think that consistency is good for them. Um, so I, I'm not sure that handing that off and taking the chair position would be in best service to the, to the students. I mean, if we can't come to a consensus and Kiki and Lisa aren't interested, you know, I, if, if that's the only option we have, um, but I just feel like that would kind of do a disservice to them. I already feel like I'm kind of already doing a disservice because I'm doing two different projects. I haven't done two different projects with two different individuals. I've had, where I've had two students working on the same project and I've had one student working on one project. This is the first time that I have two students working on two different projects. And so, I mean, it's not that it's a huge amount of time, but they're high school students. They're busy. They, you have to have a lot of flexibility and when you can meet with them or you're not going to be able to meet with them. Um, and it's basically kind of once a month, kind of, uh, getting together via Zoom or before a meeting, after a meeting. You know, talking about their project, talking about their progress on the project, et cetera. And then obviously tour, closer toward their presentation, you know, kind of taking take a, uh, taking a look at their, um, information. Um, a lot of times they are ending up researching things that I know nothing about. So kind of doing a little, you know, check on some research just to make sure that things are coming out of left field. Um, so you know, I mean, I hate to keep on beating a dead horse, but I I just, I'm not sure. I mean, maybe like October, right? Or, or November, when we were like, anybody want to help with the student projects? That would have been a good time, but I feel like we're kind of in it a bit now. Um, that this would not be a great period of time to do it.
Lisa, I, you know, I work with students and, um, residents and students, dental students, medical students, um, college students all the time on projects. So if I could be of any help, please let me know. I'd be happy to either take over one of the projects or work directly with you on, on either of the two projects or both of them. Um, so I, you know, I have a lot of experience in that area. I really appreciate what Bob just said. I, 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 I apologize ahead of time for pushing a little, but I feel like we're talking about the greater good of the Board of Health. And, um, you know, the, for the, there's the role that the Board of Health serves for the community. And, you know, maybe if we, would it help Lisa, and I know you already said what you said and I apologize for pushing, but you know, if, if we had one of them that reassigned, um, you know, I feel like, like the overall good, you know, like, just like minimizing harm of like having no, or no continuous leadership of the Board of Health. I mean, you know, would you consider allowing one of them to be reassigned? Just, you know, so for one of them to Bob, let, let that person work with Bob. I think they will be very happy. I think they would, I think they'll still appreciate it. And then that would take some pressure off of you and maybe leave it open for you to, to step in for this. I'm sorry for pushing, but I just.
Well, do we know for sure that the member, I mean, I'm a kind of assuming since the members are not at the meeting tonight, that they're not interested in the position because they probably would be here if they, if they were. Um, I mean, I know Kiki's like, you know, at birth of a child, so. Um, but, uh, is there any interest from anyone else? Right? I guess that's my question. Who's not here?
So I think that there's just one other member that's not here. Is that correct? Is that Kiki? Because uh, the other Lisa resigned, I believe in two, in September, and that position was filled by by Babby. And then we have, um, the resignation. So.
Resignation.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. So we just have Kiki. Okay.
Present.
I'll point out that if Kiki were interested in either one of these roles, she can come on the day of the elections and declare that.
Yeah, I, I would suggest that my experience with Kiki is that she's a dedicated board member, but not very interested in being chairman.
I, I feel that the students are very lucky to be associated with the board. Um, I feel that their projects are very valuable for them. And I am positive, I am 100% positive that being associated with Lisa for that project is a very positive experience. I'm not as concerned about asking them to switch to another mentor, um, not because I feel like Lisa is not the most amazing person to work with. It's just because I think kids are resilient. They'll appreciate what we give to them. And the board needs Lisa's leadership. So, and I'm so sorry, Lisa, for being pushy, but that's just, I'm just putting it out there. And Bob has offered to help. So, you know, I, that's just, I, I think that that offers us, uh, a way forward. Just my thoughts. I'm, I better put myself on mute now. I probably said way too much.
I'm not, I'm not sure what it entails being a mentor, but I'm certainly, um, first at working with students and I would be happy to help in any way also.
So, so what I'm hearing, and I, I don't want to put words in your mouth, Lisa, because I, I never actually heard you say that you, if unburdened, and even though you, if, if, if part of this is, I don't think you see uh, handling the, uh, interns as a burden, but rather as a privilege. Uh, but it is the, the bulk of the time commitment that you feel, the, the effort commitment that you feel you have. But if I'm burdened from that commitment, would you be willing to take on the role of chair for which I believe you are a natural at this point? Um, so Lei's idea of essentially reorganizing responsibilities with full commitment so that we don't lose. And I, like, like I say, I, I intend to be around, but I, I just can't continue. Uh, s- some, some of the chair people that we've had didn't necessarily feel bad about having somebody else run the meeting. When I'm committed as a chair, I feel like I have to be there for the meetings and, and assured and, and all of that. I ju-, I can't do that anymore. I can't step in here, but I can continue to commit time and effort to the board and provide support both with the interns and to you if you think that you might be willing to do that. So you, if you, if you weren't, I guess you should have come to the room saying, um, uh, if nominated, I will not run. If elected, I will not serve. Not having done that, you've taken some heat here.
Okay. Um, yeah, I mean, I, I think that if, I don't want to say burden of the students because I really do enjoy it. Um, I, I'm, um, more than willing to redirect my efforts, I guess would be the question to where the board needs it, right? And so like, I'm like, oh, you know, a little like, oh, but I, yeah. Uh, I would accept if I was nominated. I'll say it like that. As long as I'm not also managing two projects. So, you know, I think that's for everybody to kind of think about and, you know.
And as I say, you can lean on me and, and i- i- if you were willing, you could lean on me and in whatever way you might need to, to, um, to accomplish tasks, um.
Well, uh, oh, I'm sorry.
No, please, I'm done.
I, I think, I think it would be good if, if, you know, and me being one of the perpetrators of pushing. You know, I, I think it'd be good for us to say, okay, you know, at least one of these is definitely going to go to either Bob or Babby. Um, and maybe both. So Lisa, would you want both? I mean, we have two folks that say, thank you so much, that say that they are willing to mentor students.
Yeah, absolutely. I mean, obviously you might want to know a little bit. I mean, if you haven't been at meetings, you might want to know a little bit about what their projects are, et cetera. Um, but yeah, I mean, and it's not like I would be like cutting them off if they had a question for me, right? But like, I, you know, you do kind of have to track them down and, you know, be like, when are we, we mean this month, et cetera. So, um, yeah, I mean, I, if I definitely have people who are willing to step forward for that, then yeah, I'm not sure I have an excuse anymore.
Of course, it could be framed as a plus that the splendid opportunity of having worked with you um, will now be augmented by the opportunity to work with two more, uh, dedicated, capable
Right.
and committed, uh, healthcare professionals committed to the, the township. So it, it can always be sold as a plus.
I, I think it's a great, great plus. And I, I think when you look at what Lei, Lei did to organize us for tonight, you have Chloe coming in, you know, relatively new and taking responsibility, Lisa stepping up for chair potentially, Babby stepping up and Bob stepping up. I mean, now, I mean, look at the board we have. I think we have more engagement and activity than we've had in the past. And I, I shame on me because I'm not part of that, but, but I just, I mean, I, I think it looks, it looks like an exciting board, actually, for the year if we configure ourselves that way.
And in fairness, you've done a lot of the negotiating and the, the thinking behind all of this and motivating. So. And of course, Dr. Simmons goes without saying what you're doing.
Lisa, since I haven't been around for a while, can you give like a very brief, um, synopsis of the two, um, studies that the students are doing?
Sure. So the, so the one student is doing kind of more of a, a student education, like, um, talking about like researching kind of stress relief options, like breathing, ways to breathe and reduce stress, et cetera. And, um, and is planning like a little educational thing, um, with, with additional information about school, um, resources. So like little posters around the school, like stressed, you can, you know, talk to this person, do this, et cetera. Um, the other student is looking into, um, nutrition, um, at school and the cafeteria and like kind of what federal standards are, um, what you know, other options can be provided to students that are within those, um, parameters, et cetera. So kind of like speaking with um, cafeteria workers, food service, et cetera. So one's kind of nutrition-based and one's more stress-based.
Right. They're both interesting. That's great. Thank you.
So the, um, the diet-related ones struck me very strongly and I'm, 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 I'm sorry, I was looking down at my phone because there was a fellow who was an intern when I was a senior resident, who everybody will know his name when I might remember it. I'll call you all at 2AM. Uh, and that's one of the reasons I want to resign. Uh, but he was the fellow who went to the cafeteria at, um, uh, at the Baylor Hospitals, uh, in the, uh, at, um, uh, Debakey's Heart Unit and saw that they were serving all sorts of high cholesterol foods and made a fabulous career out of low-fat diets. Uh, and I think that that's 40 years ago, but, uh, I think time to do that again, maybe. So I, I thought that that was really a splendid idea. I mean, he really carved, um, I wish I could remember his name. He, 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 he was famous for his, I think.
Andrew Weil?
Yes.
Yep.
He was an intern. Thank you. He was an intern when I was a senior resident. He was, and he, he took that and he ran with it.
Yeah, now we just got to work on the carbs.
So do we have a plan?
So it sounds like we kind of have a plan.
That we need a plan for the plan because
Okay.
there are three transitions, transitioning of each of the interns. So I, I think that you, Bob and Babby need to to collaborate on that. And then, um, I guess the, the plan for the other is set. Uh, I'll be seeing the, uh, Ballet Foplorico at the time of the meeting in Mexico City. I won't even be able to zoom in, but you have my full support if you're willing to take this on. Um, and, um, I want to thank Lei and and Seth for putting the meeting together. And I want to thank you, Lisa, for allowing yourself to be strong-armed.
I, I want to thank everyone. I really want to thank everyone for taking this time when it's not even a committed, time that you normally are committed to be part of this activity. Um, I, I will say, while I'm saying, I think there's a great point about the transitions. I think the student has a- as, as much as I express relative confidence about the students, I think it would be good for them to know on that day what the plan is for them.
Yeah.
That I think would be, I think that is necessary.
Yeah. And I thi- I think maybe me just kind of shooting them an email, like we might be transitioning to someone else and here's why, right? I'm not just like, your project sucks and I want to get away from it. Um, so if maybe, uh, Robert and Mary, you guys could let me know if you are interested in which project you're more interested in, or if you don't care. And then kind of have that all worked out prior to the meeting in two weeks. So they know like this is their point person now. And I can even try to have, uh, a meeting with them in the next week or two, which I was planning to do anyway, to be honest. Um, to kind of, um, get ready to push them off.
I- is there a way for us to decide now to Babby or Bob? Do you, do either one of you have a specific interest in one of the two projects?
I, I could do either, um, stress relief might be good only in the environment that I work in because I, we have a whole team, uh, that we work with in a college or student setting. Um, that address that and could be a good resource as well.
Yeah. And I'm not opposed to assisting, especially with the cafeteria one. Um, you know, um, I have I have friends who are teachers at the high school who I, and I assist with, um, the theater program there. So my, so it was incorporated that perhaps I would go in and with the student and meet with, with questions, et cetera. So it's not that, you know, if that still seems to be helpful to whoever ends up taking on that project, I'm more than willing to do that with my school connections. Of course, we all have school connections now with, uh, somebody attending the meeting from school, but additionally.
So Bob, you're willing to take that on with Lisa and Babby, you're going to do the, uh, the, uh, stress reducers? And you guys will put together a plan for, um, transitions and we have a candidate to nominate and hopefully elect at the next meeting. Is that all correct?
Yes.
So in the interest of everybody's time, I think we have completed our agenda. Thank you, everybody, for all the efforts.
Dr. Simmons, I, I don't see any members of the public on here, um, but just to, uh, dot the i's and cross the t's, just, uh, ask if there's anybody for public comment since this is a public meeting. Um, and if not, then you can feel free to accept the motion for adjournment.
Any, any voices from the public? If not, I'll accept the motion for adjournment.
Motion adjourned.
Without a gavel, my fist. Meeting adjourned. Thank you, everybody.
Thanks, everyone. Thank you.
Thank you. Bye-bye.
Bye.